Thank you, everybody. We will call our September tenth meeting to order and we will entertain motions.
Move that we enter into executive session for discussion as regarding proposed annual or current litigation.
All of it.
All of it, yes, okay. Collective negotiations pursuant to the fourteen of the civil service law, the employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, devotion, suspension, incident, or renewal, thinking of personally or the superintendent evaluation.
Second. Moved by Jill, second by Kim. Any discussion, questions, debates? Hearing none, we'll call the question all in favor. Motion passes unanimously. We will be back at seven P M. Good folks, thank you. Thank you, everybody. We are returning from executive session. Uh, we will continue on with September tenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting, um, and I will ask if there are any modifications to the agenda. Hearing none, we'll continue with our agenda, which is public comment period, and I believe we have one person who has signed up.
That is Belissa Gonzalez.
Um, and normally we have a microphone there. I apologize, but if you could speak into the microphone because that helps people at home to hear what you're saying. Um, and a reminder, I don't, I know we don't have any more today, but a reminder that whenever we have public comments, part of our policy is not to mention names. I will politely interrupt if names are mentioned. Uh, that's just a, a standard protocol for the, for the district.
Hello, my name is Belissa Gonzalez, and I'm here tonight to comment on the vacant board position and how it should be filled. The vacancy left by the resignation of a board member should be filled by the person who received the next highest votes in the spring board election. Not only is the, is this the most fiscally responsible democratic process, but that person, a former board member, has both educational and board experience and was endorsed by the I T A. I know I cannot say her name. So instead, I will talk about her credentials and experience and why both are assets to the board. She's a longstanding community member, a mentor, a teacher, and an educator in every sense of the word. She has been part of the Ithaca community for forty-six years, spending thirty-five of those years as a teacher in I C S D, where she taught two of my family members, um, at Ithaca High School, both who sing her praises. She has said in nu- at, in numerous occasions, on numerous occasions, that education, this is a quote, has been the focus of her entire adult life, end quote. Not only, um, does she have experience as a teacher, but also as a caregiver, having had a daughter, nieces, and now a grandson go through the Ithaca City School System. Her longevity in the community and historical knowledge of educational trends and school and classroom level impacts will continue to add vital context to school board decision-making conversations that have consequences for our children and community. Equally important to me is her commitment to educational equity. Part of what impressed me about her was that she was one of the few candidates who spoke specifically and directly about their support for educational equity in the school district, giving specific examples of her work in this area over her years on the school board. It is not just her stated commitment to make sure that all students are quote-unquote seen, heard, and known, but also her acknowledgement that in order to achieve that ideal, we need to first acknowledge that our institution's policies and educational practices are steeped in inequality. In other words, she does not back down from hard and complex conversations and decision-making. My mother is a retired school teacher who went on to observe pre-service teachers, and when they would ask her for to write letters of recommendation for them, she would always end her letters with whether or not she would want that student-teacher teaching her children and now grandchildren. And that is how I think about my endorsement of this former board member and educator. Would I want her making decisions for my children? And the answer to that is a resounding yes.
Thank you. Lisa, uh, that is everyone who has signed, speak board responses.
Resounding thank you.
Any other board responses? Thank you for the time to come out and share this evening. Greatly appreciated. Uh, we will continue on with our agenda, which are our student reps. Uh, first and foremost, welcome back. I know some folks were here. Our last board meeting, but this is the first official board meeting that we have our student reps here. And I did not bring a ceremonial coin to flip to see who would start, but I see you. You have all already worked it out.
Yeah.
Great to see you, Stella.
Good to see you too. Um, yeah, I'll just start off by introducing L A C S's new reps. This is Brandon and Emily. Um, super excited to be serving alongside of them, both super active members of our school. Um, and so, yeah, I'll let Emily kick it off.
Thank you, Stella. Um, all right, well, I hate to kick it off this way, but, um, buses. Um, I know everybody's kind of sick of hearing about them. I am too, but a lot has been done to improve the morning bus situation. Um, as this year kicks off, we've encountered a couple hitches. One of our routes has been arriving fifteen minutes late, leaving forty kids missing, you know, about an, over an hour of lesson time a week. Um, another bus, Route twenty-two, I believe, um, offers wheelchair accommodation and curb-to-curb pickup in the mornings for those who need it. This year, some twelve people, including myself, uh, were unnecessarily added to this route. Um, and it sent the bus sort of around Bosie's, Kyoka Heights, and DeWitt Schools and residential areas. Uh, at the moment, the two kids that require the curb-to-curb pickup and wheelchair accommodation are getting up at six-thirty A M. just to sit on the bus for ninety minutes and missing over half of first period. And the other kids on the route are getting to school even later than they would be if they switched buses at I H S like we usually do. Um, if possible, could we make sure that this curb-to-curb pickup bus takes the two kids who specifically need it directly to school? Or at least tighten the process up?
Um, gonna talk for a minute or two about our fiftieth reunion over the summer. So in, uh, early July, L A C S and its precursor schools celebrated its fiftieth anniversary and reunion. Um, it was a huge success. Hundreds of alumni and countless former staff and administrators, uh, came together to celebrate. Uh, as a result of this reunion, alumni have pledged to get more involved in the school and its inner workings, including getting more involved in fundraising efforts and their initiatives. Those same alumni have also been encouraged by current A C S staff to lead projects and other activities to get the students more engaged and involved in L A C S and the broader community. The reunion consisted of an A S M, a panel with all former and current principals, including our founder, Dr. Dave Lehman. The anniversary weekend also consisted of tours of the school bed and campus led by current students and mixtures to get the former students meet with one another. There's a ton to say about this, um, but I think Emily can speak to it more.
Thanks. Um, so one of the goals of the reunion was to draw alumni back into our school community in a more long-term way. Uh, an alumni fundraising group emerged from the all-school meeting we held on the Saturday at L A C S reunion day. Uh, the funds raised are intended to supplement rather than replace any pre-existing funds. During the all-school meeting, past and present members of the L A C S community voted on the nature of this group. We decided that the new fundraising group will come up with a monetary goal at the beginning of each year. Students and staff will discuss as a school where the money is most needed. For example, new couch for the front entrance, new tools for the garden, supplementing student fundraising for trips, et cetera, and bring our results to the alumni group, which will raise and administer the funds. I went to the first meeting, which was in-person at the reunion, and to a few of the Zoom meetings afterwards. Our school really prioritizes student involvement and decision-making, so I'm glad that our plans for this group heavily involve students. I'm excited to see where this will lead.
Okay, um, and finally, our two-week soft start, which is a proposal that passed through all-school meeting, A S M, if you don't know the acronym yet, um, last year, that makes our first two weeks especially unique. Um, the goal of these two weeks is to allow new students to become more comfortably acclimated, um, to our offerings, how our school works, um, as well as for returning students to be reminded of and to celebrate all the unique things that we do. Um, these two weeks included, include community building, information about our democracy and our school systems, as well as brainstorming sessions, um, to improve how we do things during the first two weeks of family group, which is every day six period. Um, during our usual Thursday morning and Tuesday afternoon project splits, we're having, we had project, uh, a project sampler today, and we have a committee fair coming up, um, before students select committees and projects, so they can get to feel out what the offerings are. Um, we have some really awesome student-led projects, family groups, and committees this year. Um, so some really exciting things happening then, but yeah, just to get our community more engaged and, um, we have a lot of things that are mysterious about our school, so if you go there, you should, you should know about them, so doing our best to, um, inform one another and just create more community, especially, um, between ages. Just today, we had a high school family group pair with a middle school family group, um, and did some icebreaker games, and it's always fun to get to know our younger community. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, L A C S. Ithaca High School.
Hello. Hello. Uh, my name is Georgina. I'm a senior, and this is actually my first year on the board. Um, so first week back from school, very exciting. Uh, a few updates from Ithaca High School. Future day is coming up tomorrow, Thursday. Um, and then some athletic updates. The Bliss Gym Floor was sanded and painted with new graphics. Um, painting of walls and ceilings were completed for the fall season, and we're looking forward to a great fall season of sports. There's a large number of registration for fall sports. For modified sports, there's a total of two hundred sixty-five. Um, and for J V and varsity sports, there is a total number of four hundred thirty-eight. So the season began on August, August nineteenth for football and August twenty-sixth for all other sports. Um, so fall sports are well underway, and scholar athletes have been working hard and shining bright. Um, uh, officials appreciate appreciation night is September twenty-fourth to September twenty-sixth. Um, Everett Shaw is representing Section Four and I C S D as the N Y S P H S A A's Student Athlete Advisory Committee for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five academic year. The X C Girls and Boys won their first race for the season at Corning, um, and there's a tennis match going on right now. Uh, golf, girls soccer, girls swim, and J V varsity volleyball all travel as well for sports. So now I'd like to bring up, uh, another issue that several students are going on, um, are facing that are taking a language class. Um, so, as you all know, at the end of each year, we all select classes that we'd like to take for the following year, along with the class level that we'd like to take, and that's just based on what suits the student best. So this year, it has come to a surprise to many students, including me, that A P level, honors level, and regents level students are combined into one big classroom for a language with one teacher. Um, and this poses a huge challenge, especially to the, the students that signed up for regents class, uh, because their knowledge of the material is weaker than the rest of the class, and they're further behind. Um, this problem also affects the honors and A P students, however, because the teacher now needs to slow down the class in order for the whole class to catch up. Um, and A P students have more knowledge on the topic, on the language, and it's not fair to them either. So overall, the whole situation is just unfair to both sides because it's causing a lot of regents level students to drop out of their language classes, and I mean, why should a student be led to dropping out of class they're passionate to take because of a problem that they had no control over, you know? Why should their education be impeded because of this situation, because of the budget cuts that we're all aware of? Um, and so, I'd like to point it out to you. I'm one of those students. I, I wanted to take, I'm a honors, uh, or A P level student, but for Spanish, I take regents level. And now I've dropped out of the class because I'm much further behind than the rest of the students. Um, there's three other students along with me that were taking regents level class that were combined with everyone else, and we're all dropping out because it's just too difficult, and it's, it poses a lot of challenges, so that's what I had to say about that. Thank you so much, and I look forward to collaborating with all of you.
I'll second that. I also take German, and for German, well, I take honors four, but uh, regents four, honors four, regents five, and A P and honors five are all combined. Um, and we learn the same curriculum. We do the same worksheet, so, um, I kind of feel, end up feeling stupid in that class because there are so many other good speakers. Um, but I don't know if there's anything we can do about it now. Yeah, but if you don't know me, my name is Claire Park. I have been on the board since my sophomore year, and I'm now a senior.
I'm Kate Manseethbhatti. This is my second year on the board, and I'm also a senior. We wanted to discuss something in a little more depth tonight. We usually try to keep our responses brief, and we'll try to hold this to a couple minutes maximum because we know the board has a lot going on. So before we begin, both Claire and I would like to make very clear the great respect we have for the board. You all have devoted your time and energy to our education, and for that, we are very grateful. I personally have been inspired by many of you, your relentless work ethics, your academic and scholarly natures. It's, it's, it's really, it's really a great thing to have leaders like this in our school district. That being said, our rule as to, our role as student representatives requires that we bring concerns from the student body to your attention, of which there are many. And it also requires that we act in accordance with our own consciences, which tell us that these are legitimate concerns, that even if they cannot be immediately addressed, should be forwarded to the body at large. So we hope that you're not offended by our concerns, but we do feel nonetheless duty-bound to raise them.
So just keep it, if I were to keep it short, I'd say school is very disorganized right now, which is unsurprising considering that changes in staffing were made so recently. Some staff were notified of a change in their role or that they would be laid off just weeks or days before the first day of school. And these changes were certainly not done in good faith. Not only is it detrimental to the teachers who expected to have a job and a source of income this year, but also to the entire school. Other teachers and staff working directly with those who got cut, and even parts of the administration, were not notified in advance. Although it may not seem like much, this can, can and has ruined many staff members' plans for the school year as they scrambled to find support from other already overbooked staff. This exemplified poor communication and lack of respect to things that were not set to come with the year's school budget. Students have been directly impacted by the poor communication and support as well. We have large class sizes, many well over thirty people per class, and some classes without enough desks for each student. Since the first day of school, I've walked into my German class hoping somebody is absent or skipping so that I have a place to sit and write my notes. I'm hoping this will change tomorrow, but so far, it appears that even the basic necessities like a table and a chair in a classroom are not fully provided to the students.
There are several other problems that students are facing, but we want to keep ourselves centered on what we feel are the most important. So I will just very briefly touch on some of the tangential issues, such as, you know, there's a lot of students, as Georgina went into detail about, who are losing the high level and quality of many of our courses that they used to have because they are being crammed in with many people who are, for better or worse, just at a different level than they are. And it's, it's not fair to the people on the lower levels. It's not fair to the people on the higher levels. But, you know, learning in our classes has become more unproductive than it ever has been before.
We also want to mention the layoff of building substitutes, uh, which took place last month. The board knows that this is a concern brought up, um, by many in the previous board meetings, so we won't go too much in-depth about what the problem is. However, we did want to bring, um, to question if this was communicated to the public clearly. Uh, we found that in Agenda Item five-point-two of the June thirteenth Finance Work Session Meeting, um, there's a document titled Revote Proposed Budgeted Expenditures Line by Line. And in that document, under Substitute Teacher Salaries, it says recoding of L T S slash Building Substitute Salaries from Special Aid, which are COVID ones. Um, and that shows no indication of firing any building substitute, um, or the district's substitutes in general. Um, but rather, they would be still employed and would be paid from the Special Aid Funds, even with the revoke budget. However, we've witnessed that reality was different, um, and I think it showed the lack of communication between the board and the public.
Now, we're aware of the fact that things change, budgets evolve. We can't necessarily predict what's going to happen one month based on a previous month, and so we understand that things have to be fluid. But considering that this is the budget that people voted on, even if that the bu- the budget leaves leeway for the things that have happened to transpire, it still feels a little bit like it's cloaked to the public, e- if not purposefully, but still difficult to understand. And to that end, it's, it's often been said at this board and at these meetings, and with some reason too, that, you know, consequences of a lower budget are that things will go away. That's just the fact of the matter, and there's not something people can do about that. Now, I agree with that, and I'm fully aware that a lot of the things we're bringing up now might not necessarily get solved immediately, but the reason we're bringing them up now is because we think in the future preemptive action needs to be taken. And by that, what I mean is that the board can say that there are consequences of a lower budget, and that's true. But why was the budget lower in the first place? The budget was lower because people rejected the initial vote. There's a lot of reasons for that, right? That, that's because of, uh, assessments for property. That's because of Cornell and the amount that they pay. That's because of the state and the aid that they give, the tax ra- tax rate maintaining still taxes increase because property values have risen. There's a number of reasons for these things. But I would say that there's another reason too, and it's a reason that I think has been disregarded all too often, which is that in order for people to have faith and trust in their school district, there needs to be clear and concise communication. I won't deny that there has been communication, but I think that you cannot expect community members in general to show up to every single board meeting, to come to every single vote and try to say their piece, because, you know, it's been often mentioned that the board wishes people would have been involved earlier in the budget process. But that's hard. I mean, this, these things happen at night where people have kids and they have jobs, and i- it's, it's a difficult thing for people who have not signed up to come here consistently to be that actively involved in their community. And thus, so I understand why they made an appearance when their finances were directly called into question. We must be capable of anticipating people's needs, not just responding to mass protest. I understand that the board knows this, and I'm not saying this to try to shame anybody into what we should have done or that kind of thing. But I think it's important to understand that for students on the ground, these missteps and miscalculations have real consequences in our day-to-day lives. Uh, additionally, many public commentators mentioned that if they were more confident in this leadership through communication, they would have no problem paying taxes. In fact, there was a particular respondent, and this happened several times throughout public comment, but I just wanted to touch on one, who said he really values education, but quote, "needs to see justification for why this budget is the way it is", and said that he would vote no unless he received that justification. There has been numerous claims by the Board, Superintendent's Office, Administration at Large, ha- that the information about the budget process is easily accessible. So we tested that. We went online onto the district website and spent over an hour trying to analyze budget propositions, the, uh, meaning of what the financial jargon, what it really means practically, and we found that if Claire and I, two student representatives to the Board of Education who've sat in on the vast majority of these meetings, need to take more than an hour to even understand partially the systems which are at play here, how on earth is a, you know, single mother who's busy raising, raising her children and trying to work three jobs at the same time supposed to be able to accommodate for that? So, to me, this feels like a lack of respect, if not intentionally. I think respect is not, respect is something that's done, not something that's given. And in order to have respect and show it to another human being, especially one whose finances and whose livelihood relies on the very taxes which are increasing and whose children's futures rely on the education that this district is providing, there is so much at stake that respect must be an item of immense value and importance, which is placed above all else. And that same lack of respect, again, feels like it can be seen in building subs being notified very late, other staffs getting new jobs or being laid off with only a couple of weeks' notice. It feels a disrespect to the public and a disrespect to the school community.
And we're going to close by noting one final thing. We lost our family liaison this year because apparently the district has deemed that the position is not one of priority, but, uh, we want to be here and say that to many students at I H S, she was a pillar of support, and her office was a safe space for many students. We no longer, we no longer have free school supplies, no more emails regarding free community resources and supports, and no more communications explaining the significance of cultural and religious celebrations on holidays and other special dates. Because of the last-minute cut and no smooth transition possible, none of these roles, um, that our family liaison previously did were assumed by other staff members, so we ended up taking a huge step backwards. And we did notice that changes to the liaison role has not appeared on the personal report, uh, for the board to vote on yet. We don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but it gives us some hope that we will be able to have a family liaison again, and we know he's perfect for it. Um, and we would like to clarify that Ms. Berman did not ask us to write this and have very little.
No names, please, if we can, Claire, my apologies.
The ideas which we have articulated are completely our own, with no outside editing or influence. Many people are willing to pay for education, but they're not willing to pay for deception and the constants of poor student performance and low teacher pay. How can we expect our populace to accept a budget which hurts them unless they are certain of our good faith? We're not acting responsibly.
This budget cycle was an opportunity for the board and administration leadership to show courage, capability, and communication skills. And especially in the latter, I think we have failed a lot. And students are suffering because of that, students like us and the students we represent.
Thank you, board reps. Uh, board responses.
Yes, I'll start it off. Thank you. There's a, well, appreciate all of the comments, um, from the students, kind of a lot to unpack there and a lot, um, to think about. Um, I guess probably different board members might want to respond to different things, I guess. Um, one thing that, that's, that stuck out for me, um, sort of had to do with some of the question about, um, you know, heterogeneous models of learning in, in different classes. I guess you're talking about language classes. We have it in other classes in the district. Um, you know, sometimes it's math classes. Um, and I think, um, for this year, maybe at curriculum, this would be, you know, a good topic to explore and just talk a little bit more about. Um, you know, that when a heterogeneous model is used, and there's a lot of advantages to using heterogeneous models, there's some disadvantages that you guys have pointed out. Um, you know, but what, what structures of support, you know, can be in place to, you know, so that those models can be successful, um, you know, and working with different people who are in the classrooms. And I think that should be one, uh, one focus of, of discussion at curriculum that I'd certainly like to talk about, so I appreciate you bringing it to the attention of the board, to the attention of the community. Um, I think also, you know, the school year has just begun. It's only been a couple of days. Um, and there are a lot of changes this year, and I think, um, it would be interesting to see how things develop over, you know, the next several weeks as everybody kind of adjusts to some different, uh, experiences based on the budget that we have this year and other factors. Um, so definitely like to follow up on that, hear how things are going, and, uh, talk more about that as the year goes on.
Any other board member responses?
Thank you all for your student rep comments, um, to L A C S. So I'd like to know when your newsletter is coming out because you introduced it last year, and we're definitely looking forward to the continued updates. And, um, there was a lot said. Thank you very much, um, I H S students, and my response is- And my response, especially around communication, is that it's, it can be challenging at times. But yet, how do we get the word out and how do we educate the community? We have different vehicles that get the word out. We have on our website, and you said that there were challenges. And trying to go through the budget information. We, there isn't, there's not really any expectation for. We know we're not going to always see a large crowd come to board meetings on a Tuesday night. And rightly so, because a lot is happen, happening with families. Yet there's also the Let's Talk portal, which we try to respond to, and we read the comments there. As well as um the different committee meetings. Um, we definitely delved into the budget here at the board meetings. But uh we have our finance committee and then issues around facilities, that's also discussed at the facilities committee as well as that. HR, curriculum and policy and all of our other committees, so. And since all of our meetings are online now, we hope that people are tuning in at times. And, and, and send it to messages to any of the board members too, to just ask for further clarification. As well as this, the communication protocol at different schools. And we, I know that our administrative staff goes out to PTAs and try to get people involved. And so there are different ways and how can we work together to make sure people are understanding. And, and get their questions asked. Hopefully, we will continue to try to do a good job where that's concerned. But definitely continue to hold us accountable as well as getting students more committed. I see we have students here from their class that are coming out to the board meeting too. So um, we definitely look at different ways to continue to improve communication. As well as what do, what needs to be done and, and being flexible with it too.
Any other board responses?
Uh, can you all hear me? I'd like to. Floating head, it's Erin Croyle, uh, speaking virtually, the floating head above y'all. Um, Claire and, and Katam, thank you so much as always for, you know, speaking your truth and representing your school. I really appreciate it, and I imagine that was difficult, uh, but I appreciate it. I, I think one thing that's really important to point out, you mentioned how hard it was for you to find information about the budget. And that it took you an hour, and this is as board reps, I'm right there with you. I find the budget comp uh process to be extremely complicated. Um, this is my sixth year on the board and I'm still learning new things. That's why we talk about it being a year-long process and trying our best. I mean, we have seriously tried in my time on the board, so hard to try to get the information out about the budget. In a way that is easy to understand, and that is not an easy thing to do. And I, I don't expect people to start really paying attention until later, but you know. It's hard to cram that much information in the night before you're gonna vote, so I appreciate the engagement we had last year. Um, I also want you to know that the pain points that you mentioned. I don't think anyone on this board, I don't think anyone I've spoken to who works at the school district has found any of this to be easy. I think it's really important to keep in mind that, um, you know, we had the budget revoke process and then in June. We were still figuring out the budget and then all of the things that came with it, everything was a projection. This is gonna be an ongoing process as we're budgeting, you know, money is fluid. There's nothing truly set. You have line items, but things vary. Um, so it's complicated. And so it's important that you all keep telling us the, the things that are happening at your school so we can help and figure out. What we're gonna do in this year to navigate this new way that our school district's gonna function. Um, you know, and the losses that you mentioned. You know, that's why the initial budget that was proposed was so high, because we wanted to keep all of those things that you mentioned. Nobody wanted to cut the building subs or Mandarin or any of it or avid. I mean, nothing. But this, these were hard decisions that had to be made, and you know, we've got a, there's probably going to be more. So um, I don't mean right now, I mean like looking at next year's budget at any rate. So thank you, and please do keep speaking and saying the hard things.
Uh, I'd just like to echo what my colleagues have said, so just two responses. Mentioned the enrollment issues and you're correct, it's related to the budget. And I just, you know, ask for the students to, your patience and understanding. Um, I would also like to point out or would commend the faculty, um, this is a big burden on your teachers. And when, when levels are combined, it's a lot more work for them, longer, longer evenings preparing for the next day. When there are multiple levels combined, uh, you mentioned German, which I think is almost an extreme case, and I just wanna point out that. The Ger- the German department was just absolutely committed to trying to serve all their students. And no matter how difficult it is, no matter how big the ask was on the faculty, they wanted to step up and do the best they possibly could. Uh, for their students, so it, I, I realize it's difficult for students, but at the same time, I want to commend the faculty for being willing to take on all that extra work. And I just wanted to double down on, on Karen's, you know, ask for patience that they will get better at it. Cause it's a different model than last year, and with a little time, there may be some improvements as people adjust. And also thank Adam for, you know, offering, I think, the curriculum to take a look at, at other. If not, if not financial, are there other resources perhaps that we could offer to these high boarding classes to, to help the faculty, to help the students? Given, given where we are, so just recognize both of those. Uh, on the broader question of uh. It, it, it is, it is not only okay, it's not only appropriate, it's, it's almost, I think, almost obligatory. For you to bring bad news to us, you know, we, we don't come here for self-affirmation. If I wanted to feel good, I'd do other than that. I don't come here to, you know, believe feeling good about myself. Um, you know, I come here to try to improve public education in this community, and we can't do that, you know, if we. Don't hear hard truths from you. Now, it, it's no surprise for us to hear what you're saying. Cause when we had those, some of those difficult conversations in the last year and over the summer. We knew that this was the consequence of those tough decisions, just like Aaron said, I mean, we knew this was coming. Um, I guess the, the last thing, comment I'd say, and you know, last year was my first year on the board. I, I don't want to speak for others, but I wish I could have to go over, you know, in retrospect. Uh, I, I will confess the assessment issue was one that at least blindsided me. And maybe had I known that six months earlier, uh, certainly, you know, I might have approached things differently. I think a lot of us didn't, didn't see that coming and didn't fully appreciate the, the assessment sort of, sort of means kind of out of, you know, kind of out of the left field. It's not something we normally think about, but it had a big impact. There were other things as well, um, but uh, you know, we need to do better. Uh, I think we got a clear message from the community, uh, and now a clear message from, from our students, um, that we need to do better. And uh, I would, again, only speaking for myself, um, we don't want to have a repeat of what happened last year, this year. And so I, I think we're gonna be trying to work faster and earlier and better to try to identify uh efficiencies. And you know, uh, just the last thing I'll say is, you know, class sizes went up, right? In many cases doubled. That's a one-time savings. You can't do it next year, cause you can't go from fifteen to thirty and then from thirty to sixty. So we've pulled the, I, I wanna say low hanging fruit, cause that trivializes, but we've sort of pulled the, you know, next time around, it's even harder, right? And so we're gonna have to start early and think long and hard about how to find savings and efficiencies. And then also, to your point, communicate the need to the public uh for their patience and generosity and, and support in their education.
Uh, I guess I'll say a couple of things. One, um, buses, I know folks are working on it. And it doesn't do us any good to say be patient, because you already have. Uh, I think last year, folks worked really hard with LACS to try to find some solutions. It took a while, it will take a while. Um, I say this as someone who had their grandbaby on a bus for more than two hours on a day. Um, but also trying to work with her to understand that things take place and things happen. And so uh, I don't think anyone's at fault, and we understand as we begin the new school year, begin routes. Some people are there, some people are not there, some people get added. Um, with that being said, I know that the transportation department is working excessively hard, and we hope to find a solution to that soon. Please keep us informed. Uh, and I know I'm looking at the folks in the room who may be working on that as well, so I, so I think every year we have it. Um, it's also difficult when you don't have the right number of bus drivers and you have to double up on routes and everything else, right? So we appreciate that, thank you. Um, LACS fiftieth, uh, brought me great pride to see some students back in town that I haven't seen in twenty years. Actually, I shouldn't even give a timeframe. Um, I will send out to board colleagues that Deborah Hoard from PSP production put a small video together. I'm not even sure, I assume that some of the LACS community have seen it, maybe other board members have not seen it, we'll make sure that that gets around. But it does begin to capture some of the feel of, of that um event and the uh. National and international importance that LACS has in the field of democratic education. So we are, uh, when I tell people that I was able to be mentored by Dave Lehman, Dr. Dave Lehman, their eyes light up. And I, and I feel great pride that I've had a couple of phenomenal mentors in my life. Dr. Dave Lehman being one, early in my career, Dr. James Turner being another, a little later in my academic career, um, what, what a blessing. So we'll make sure that that gets out, so thank you for sharing. Um, to our uh, Ethica High School student reps, um, one, I expect nothing less, so I appreciate that. Um, and uh, as much as in your um, without question responsibility and duty to speak your truth. It is also um, my responsibility, my duty to speak my truth, and I have great respect and admiration for what was said. Um, and I'm not gonna own all of it. It's, it's a shared responsibility. So some of it falls upon the board and some of it is a reflection back to our community. And so for me, the question isn't that the board is the only one that needs to do better. I would humbly say our community needs to realize what they're supporting and also do better as well. Those are strong words for me to say from this position, and I realize I'm gonna get feedback and email for that. I get that, I understand that. Uh, but at no point in time was anything that we were engaged in from a place of lack of good faith. A place of intended disrespect, even while I understand it is received that way and experienced that way. But the ways in which many of us give our time, our energy, uh, I continue to say it. Um, I probably could have written four or five books, but I'm giving twenty to twenty-five hours. Um, working for the school district on a volunteer basis. That's not to say that it solves the situation that we have. I think to Garrick's point, yes, I'll own that we need to do better. And it's a difficult conversation for our community who also has to engage in that conversation about what kind of school district do we want in our community. It is not solely a lack of communication, though I will admit communication is a problem. There are other conversations about priorities, other conversations about goals, other conversations about who we want to be. And those are real difficult conversations, and so I'm, I as one board member will not own all of that. I'm gonna sleep this evening with an understanding that, yes, I need to do better, and as a community, we need to hold ourselves accountable as well. To the press, I don't know how you're gonna record that, but please make it sound better than I said it, and we'll proceed from there. Any other board comments? Thank you. It's gonna be an ongoing process. The board is already aware that we are gonna have a long year. And we are committed to finding the best possible solutions through all these difficulties, and we will continue to do so in good faith. And with as much respect and admiration for the amazing folks who do the work that they do. So that will bring us to our consent agenda, and we will entertain motions.
I move to approve all consent agenda items listed in consent agenda. Consideration of accounts, personnel reports, students and minutes of a previous meeting as presented.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Jill. Questions, discussion, debates, conversation? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor of the consent agenda? That is unanimous, including Erin as well. Thank you very much. That brings us to our next agenda item, which is our superintendent report, Dr. Brown.
Thank you for the opportunity, Professor, and I apologize for standing this evening. Um, fifty is the new thirty, um, and I attempted to celebrate my fiftieth birthday this weekend by working out as if I was a thirty-year-old. And it didn't work out so well. Um, fifty-year-olds should not, I'm gonna say this publicly, fifty-year-olds should not be doing deadlifts. And uh, it results in herniated this, but I'm here, um, and I will stand and I apologize for not being at the table for the entire meeting. Um, and I'm feeling joyful tonight. Today's been a great day. Um, the last weeks have been great. As the young people that we serve are back in our buildings, and it feels good. Um, I've had an opportunity to be in every building and most learning spaces in the school district, and I'm here to say, um. Well, one, I'll step back. Yeah, yes, uh, the financial challenges that our community is facing have had an impact on our school district. I said that last year, we've said that. Um, now, I never said it would be a negative impact, but I knew it would have an impact. And I still think that because of the talented educators we have, that whether it's positive or negative is gonna be on the talented educators that you. Uh, employ. So yeah, uh, but yeah, there are some negatives that have come. The class sizes are larger and that's impacting us. Um, sections have been collapsed and that has impacted us. Folks who have been in roles that they have thrived in for years are not in those roles, and that has impacted us. Um, and then those things have been negative. And I've said, I think, uh, I, I need to remind folks of some timelines here now. Um, we were, as an administrative team and as a governance team, we were, we were handed a number late June. And at this table, we talked about spending some time, even though it would be too short of time, to put together an approach to staffing. And presenting a school district to our community in August and September. And we were asked to take the summer to do that in the best ways we could, with the knowledge that we will be talking to folks about new assignments. In late August, even in September. I'm thinking about a kindergarten teacher who's had two, three different assignments in the last two weeks. That is, and I've gone through this in different states, that is going to be our new normal as we navigate fiscal challenges. And as we shift six, seven, eight million dollars in my budget from year to year and not finding out in June. Now, I will say that publicly, and I will say that to folks, that will be a new normal, how we staff our buildings, who's in the buildings, how we allocate the funds and the staffing. Um, folks who are anticipating doing the same thing each year in the same way, that is something that may shift over time. And we would do that according to the contracts we have, and we would do that in a way that is most respectful, but it will happen. As a person who has had to live through that, as a teaching assistant, as a teacher, and as an administrator who got an assignment on the first day of school. And that is what we would do. And that's another reason why we talk about the need now for our community to be more loving than ever. It will require patience and trust and commitment. Um, it will require us not to be so quick to judge. Um, patience, trust and commitment, I heard from the board responses. I heard other words over the last couple of weeks around faith and uh, lack of courage. That won't move this conversation forward, and I can say as your leader, um, I'm looking to make sure that we are a loving community and not a judgmental one. Because we're all grappling with some very tough things, and at the time we're grappling with very tough things, a lot of joy is still happening and taking place. Because they know those classrooms that are larger and those sections that have been collapsed. And with the educators who are still with us, who've had to now take on different roles, many people taking on different roles, including people at the highest levels, exec team, taking on two or three different new roles. Um, they, they, they're doing all right, all right, and we're gonna, we're gonna check on those folks, and we're gonna be there for those folks. That is going to be different, and while they're doing it, I'm also seeing uh enhancements with teaching and learning. And I'll just talk about the high school, let's focus in on the high school, um, Ethica High School. And the contrast between love and judge, judgment. Yeah, we have a brand new gym, and folks at this table who've been a part of that conversation for the last couple of years about making sure that new gym was installed and the type of flooring. Down to the details about the lettering, we've had conversations here, and it was finally implemented, it finally put in place, and it looks outstanding. And I've seen somebody who played football on it today. Now, I saw that in place, I saw the PE classes that are enjoying it, I'm gonna see athletic teams play on that space the next couple of weeks and into the fall and to winter. However, you know, our custodians um had gotten the feedback, and so did I, and so did y'all probably, that people are angry because the banners and the flag aren't up yet. Now, our custodians have been working at bus so hard to get our classes ready, and as I was with them today, as we were walking through the gym with no banners or flags, they were. Not feeling their best because people were giving them negative feedback about that flag not being up. So I'll ask for our community to be patient and to be forgiving as we navigate challenges um to serve the young people we serve. And at the same time, we uh challenge to maintain the level of academic excellence that we have been known for. I'm gonna remind folks what I said at the last meeting, we need to recognize excellence too. Our community that demands excellence, but never really recognizes it. And yes, uh, Ethica High School um is one of the best high schools in the nation, period. I've been saying that for fifteen years, and every once in a while, I like to. I've been saying that for fifteen years and every once in a while I like to share receipts. U S News World Report is a reputable source to give assessments on schools across our nation. And we're in a college town, people know that. And we mostly, I can even put it up here. And most recently, they came out with their national ranking. I have issues with rankings, particularly when they don't look so good for us, but when they're good, I'm going to make sure I share them, all right? And when you're finding yourselves in the top two, three percent of high schools in the entire nation, year after year, and yet again, even the midst of fiscal challenges, it's something we need to recognize. And I said here a few years ago, we had the second best STEM high school in the state. We were also at the same time forty-eighth in the country. We've maintained that status. At the same time, we're building a STEM wing at our ethical high school. So if folks who, and I said this on the radio this morning, folks who are looking for ways to judge, I will ask them to step back and look for ways to love and to recognize the joy that's happening in our classrooms and to look at the multitude of indicators, academic achievement indicators that we have access to. And here is one, and I'm going to use my time if okay with you, Professor. If you can continue to give me time. At each one of these sessions, I hope to bring artifacts and receipts of how our schools are thriving and meeting the needs of young people in the midst of fiscal challenges. And I'll also share where we're struggling too. But too often we look past the excellence that comes to play every day. And for me, if I were using the word disrespectful, that's disrespectful to the educators in our school district. We've done a great job of, my colleagues across state would love to be able to share what I'm sharing right now. To be in the top four percent of schools in the state, in the country, I'm sorry, in the country, and having one of the best STEM high schools in the nation. At the same time, we're more diverse and our highest level course offerings are more diverse than ever. And our young people are scoring better on those exams or standardized assessments than they've ever done before. Anyway, I'll share more of those later. Thank you for the opportunity to share this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. We will continue on with our agenda, which brings us to school district business. We have a couple of items here this evening. The first item is agenda item eleven point one, which is an athletic merger with Tru Mansburg Central School District and Lansing Central School District for Varsity Girls Hockey for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five season. We will entertain motions and then we can have any discussion.
Athletic mergers with Lansing and Truman'sburg Central School Districts for Girls Ice Hockey for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Moved by Jill, second by Adam. Questions, conversation, discussion, debates?
Well, just not questions, but just reiterated once and here that we never displace any I H S I C S D student when we do this, when we partner with another school district. We don't provide transportation for the other school district that's on the illness on that family in that district.
And this is a merger that we have done over the past couple of years. So this merger in particular for girls hockey is not necessarily new. Hearing no other questions or comments? We will call the question. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Agenda eleven point two, appointment of community members to the audit committee. We'll entertain motions and then we'll discuss and ask for questions.
Following community members as audit committee members effective July first, twenty twenty-four through July twenty twenty-five. Annual reorganization meeting resolved Jed Ashton, Hey Hey Depew and Christina Renne Camp upon the recommendation of the Board of Education Audit Committee. Be and hereby are appointed to the audit committee members effective July first, twenty twenty-four through the July twenty twenty-five annual reorganization meeting.
Moved by Jill, second by Adam. The board has discretion every year at its reorganization meeting or at any time through the school year to create a committee structure, which we try to engage with most of the work. So a significant amount of the work that the board does happens through committees, be it through the facilities committee, through the curriculum committee, through the finance committee. Those are all the discretion of the board. The audit committee is unique and it's the only committee that is mandated that every small city school district have. And in that legal mandate, it also requires that there be community members that are assigned to the committee. So board members will also be welcome to attend at any point in time. And yet, because the audit is both reviewing an internal audit as well as a third-party external audit, it requires community participation to serve on that committee. And these are the folks we said two meetings ago, if people had an interest to reach out. A number of folks reached out to us. We are grateful for the folks who did. For the folks who reached out after the fact that we already selected names. Thank you for your willingness to continue to engage with us. We will find ways for continued engagement. But again, it is yet another demonstration of how engaged and involved our community is and we are grateful for their service. They may rethink that after serving on the audit committee after a year, but we'll be moving forward with that. So that's the process that we use this year to select the names. And I don't know if there's any other conversation, discussion or debate amongst the board. Hearing none. We'll call the question. All in favor of the motion of the community members on the audit committee? That is. Aaron, are you voting for the member, the community members on the audit committee? Fantastic. That is unanimous. I'll phrase that differently next time. That gives you an opportunity to say no, right? That brings us to agenda item eleven point three, board vacancy discussion. Before Jill, if I can be as bold, had a recommendation that we put a motion on the table. My recommendation would be that we, if the board so chooses to move the motion second and then have the discussion that needs to follow with that. And so that's the, that's a process that we can do. And the idea was, if I'm not mistaken, if I can speak for you, Dr. Tripp, I probably should not. But we could sit and continue to discuss, which we will have some discussion, but that emotion would help solidify the process moving forward. And we would know one way or the other, which way we wanted to move. Is that fair?
Very fair.
So we will entertain motions.
Motion to appoint the next highest vote recipient from the May twenty twenty-four election. Two, thank you. Two Phil vacancy until the May twentieth, twenty twenty-five election.
I second.
Moved by Jill, second by Karen. Discussion, debate, dialogue, conversation?
Just clarification. I mean, we would appoint the next highest vote getter and if that person declined, we go to the next, going or is it just one, a one? Are we at one time or are we going to go down the line?
No, this was a conversation that Adam and I had as well. The original motion was set that we would go down the line. As part of a conversation, we agreed that we would go to the next vote getter. If that person were declining, then we would entertain a new motion to make it happen. So right now we are only, the motion on the table is only to look at the fourth highest vote getter at this moment. That is the motion that's on the table. Other discussion, comments, debate?
We, we heard from a public comment this evening about in favor of moving this forward. We've received emails, let's talk from community members saying that they're recommending that we move this forward in this way. I know I spoke about it at the last meeting that the community did vote. We had seven candidates running for three seats in May for the start in July first, twenty twenty-four. And the community voted and, and we could see the results, which are in board docs as well as on our website too, of the order from one to seven. So I think we talked about last time of the cost, if we were to incur look at a special election, which would cost almost forty thousand dollars. And we said, no, that is not a wise step to take. So I am in favor of us definitely going with this motion to proceed because as I also stated, we have eight individuals on the board. We are nine, should be a nine-person board. There's a lot to be done and a lot of work to be divvied out. So it would be good to get someone with the experience that we've seen and which was also endorsed by one of our unions too.
Additional board comments, questions?
Personally, I'm opposed to it. I, I don't think as a board, you have the right to circumvent the democratic process. And I think that, you know, when people vote, you know, depending on the current makeup of the board will depend on how people will vote. And I mean, you see that in national elections, you know, like sometimes you'll, you'll have people voting for a different party in Congress because of who's president. You know, to create more of a balance. And I think that the current makeup of the board will determine how people vote. And there's some people that might have voted one way previously and they'd vote differently in the future. And I don't think that we have the right to, to take that process away. And that's just my personal opinion.
Oh, you want the mic? Okay.
I was, I was being, I was, it was a subtle point. Yeah, I think, I guess just, I think it's important to say, I kind of talked about this last time and I gave my perspective. I think, you know, we had lots of emails coming in and we had public comments where a lot of really nice things were said about the person whose name can't be mentioned. And all of those things are true and there's certainly a lot of people in the community, you know, who would support that. And at the same time, we had a community election and, you know, that person in this particular election did not get enough votes by the community to make it onto the board. And I, I agree with Todd's sentiment that, you know, I'd rather not as a board or as a board member, make the selection of that person. I'd rather hear from the community at large. And since in this particular election, this person was not selected to continue on the board, even though they had been selected in many previous elections. I think that we, you know, should not necessarily be appointing somebody that doesn't have the, the approval of enough community members to make it across the finish line, so to speak.
Any additional board comments?
Approval of enough community members. In May, when the election happened, there was three seats available, three open seats at that time. And seven candidates, right? So now another seat became open because a board member resigned. So therefore it's not, it's looking at what the community said at that time. They did vote. The community did vote and for the candidates. And according to our policy two, one, five, zero, fill in board vacancies, we can choose to go this route. At times I wonder why are we looking to go, it seems a bit personal. Is it personal or is it to fill a seat, a vacant seat? Which we need to fill a vacant seat. So everyone who does not want to fill this vacancy, when it comes to being on the advisory committees, I hope you are signing up for that. The additional advisory committees, the audit committees and every extra work that is involved. Instead of, we need to look at it as the distribution of workload. And that's what I'm in favor of.
To reiterate, Karen, not only is it a policy that the fourth highest vote, vote getter would then get position, but you know, to speak to the democratic process, one, a special election, you know, aside from being fiscally irresponsible, we know would have lower turnout because it is not in any sort of regular cycle. And the voices that were heard in May and in June would not be the same voices. And so if we want to get into that sort of, you know, treachery, we can, you know, this tricky conversations, but the fact is, this person got the fourth most votes. The seat is empty. We need a board member. It's a lot of work. And this person has proved their worth time and time again. And it's just one, I've been on this board long enough to say if one person and there's weird allyship because one person is going to change the whole board, that is so ridiculous. I've never seen it function like that. And I, like, there's not devious things going on here. We just want a full board so we can have forum, so we can keep business moving.
Additional board member responses or comments?
The community elected us to the board and so the community is who I choose to be responsive to. If the community had been told that they had four board seats to fill, I do not necessarily believe that it would have been the same four people that were listed as the four highest vote getters. There had, there would have been an opportunity for other people to run for that fourth board seat. And so there's really no way to know and go back in time to know whether that person still would have received the fourth, the fourth highest votes. I also frankly find it a little offensive to imply that this is personal, especially when the people who are advocating for the fourth vote getter are not advocating. I haven't, I actually haven't received one message that just said, we want it to be the fourth vote getter, no matter who it is. Every single message, every conversation that I've heard among our vote board colleagues has been specifically personal about a specific person that they are advocating for to take the seat. And so I, I, I don't appreciate the insinuation that it is, that there is any personal nature in this. It's, it's wanting to be responsive to a democratic process and the electorate being able to make the decisions about who sits on this board.
Just, just a correction. The names of the candidates are online and there is a fourth name that is actually there. Well, forward that because that's the fourth name out of the seven candidates. Because that's the fourth.
Right. And they're not talking about just, let's go for, well, they're not talking about a policy where we just take the fourth. They're talking specifically campaigning for someone in particular.
I, I'm going to make one comment as well. I, I also, I challenge the idea that it's not a democratic process. And it's not because the, the, the motion that I originally wrote was that the board would appoint the person in descending order should someone choose to accept. So for me, it was a process. It wasn't a person. If the fourth person said no, then we go to the fifth person. If the fifth person said no, then we go to the sixth person. The sixth person said no, then we go to the seventh person. Those were the people that put their name forward, that did the work to be able to be on the ballot. And that is for me, for me, it is absolutely about having a ninth board member giving the amount of work that we want to do. And then the comment about a democratic process, the reason why I challenge that is that the state of New York education law gives the authority to an elected school board to appoint someone to a vacant seat. It can't get much more democratic than that. We are democratically elected and we are then given the authority, should there be a vacancy, to either appoint, to not appoint, or to hold a special election. So when I hear from one board member's perspective about it's not democratic, it is exactly how democracy is currently written by law. That we do have that authority to appoint somebody. And I made mention at the last board meeting that in my fifteen years, there have been eight resignations. And when I said it, I was like, hmm, that seems high. And in fact, there have been eight resignations. Three times we have appointed people, five times we have not. It has almost always been dependent upon when the resignation happens. If it happens in February, we were not appointing people because there didn't seem like it was the right move, right? One point in time, it happened in April, so we were able to get the ballot changed immediately. The other two times that we were able to appoint someone, and I also made mention that one of the votes that I regret the most was not appointing a ninth board member the last time we were in this situation because of the amount of work. So for me, I understand about the idea of we all think differently and that's the beauty of a board. But it is a democratic process. It couldn't be any more democratic than going to the election results and figuring out who was next in line. And the state of New York education law authorizes school boards to make appointments. So partly, or not make appointments, but if that is what is written in law, then that is democracy. We are given the right to do so, should we choose or should we not choose? So obviously I am in support and I'm not in support of just, I'm in support of four, five. So obviously I am in support and I'm not in support of just, I'm in support of four, five, six, seven. And I'm in support of a ninth board member. Too much work. We have hearing from our student reps about our inability to communicate. Another person to be able to help us with that would be ideal for my situation, but that's my, my quick comment. And I did hear Jill ask for a vote, so I want to make sure we provide any space or time.
For my own edification, could we appoint anyone we wanted? Do we have?
Yes, the board can adopt any process that it wants. Absolutely. Some boards have done it by an interview process. I would dare say, let me know what time you all have to make that take place. And half the boards go back to the most recent election, if it was within a reasonable timeframe. The, the most common is probably going to the election results. We are not the only school board that faces resignation. So it's very common for school districts to go to the next highest vote getter. And it's also common for school districts to do another process as well. So the board has the authority to appoint whomever they want and whatever manner they feel is just. But if we're talking about democracy, let's be careful about talking about appointments that may not.
I'm just asking for my own.
I, I hear you. Yeah, I appreciate that. It is, it's a fair question. Everyone should know.
Yes.
The board can do one of those three options. While the question? All in favor of the motion on the table? Got the four all opposed. The motion does not pass. That brings us to agenda item eleven point four. The draft policy of the nomination and election of board officers for a first reading. We'll enter, we'll entertain motions and then we'll discuss.
Nomination and election of board officers for a first reading motion to approve policy two, 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 one. Nomination and election of board officer, officers for a first reading.
Do we have a second? Moved by Jill, second by Adam. The history of this policy is relatively new. It comes not necessarily in response to the most recent election. There were conversations two years ago. There were conversations three years ago. Finally deciding that we had time, thanks to Emily Tracy Arm for the work and looking to see what school districts do across the state. And the idea was to see if we couldn't change our nomination process prior to voting for board officers. So the policy in front of you was discussed at the policy committee. In essence, there would be a nomination stage where all nominations would be on the floor. And then board members would vote by ballots to select a person, be it either the president or the vice president. Those ballots would be read by the district clerk into the minutes. So it would still be, everyone would know who voted, but we'd be voting at the same time. And we would continue similar to the ever process we had this time, should that not be the case. I also want to recognize that folks received an email from a community member who was suggesting that we looked at ranked choice voting, which is something that is moving across the state and it may be in Ithaca before we know it, at least at the primary stage. I greatly appreciate that work, so thank you. I can speak to why I don't think it would be a good idea for this process as one board member, but that's an option as well. Or if the board wants us, should this be passed, we could go back to the policy committee to have that conversation. And then for everyone's sake, just a reminder. Policies begin in the policy committee. If the policy committee agrees, it goes to the board for a first reading. If the board agrees, it goes back to the policy committee for any modifications or edits. And then if the policy committee agrees, it goes back to the board for a second reading and adoption. So we still have a couple of stages left in this process. So let's see what questions folks may have, suggestions, ideas, recommendations?
I've read this and I support it. It fits with what I know of the legal options for us. And it seems like a very fair process for getting the names out there of anyone who's interested in running. So I recommend that we keep going on this policy.
And just for clarification, this is a new policy.
This is a new policy, yes. Additional comments, questions? Recommendations? Hearing none? We'll call the question. All in favor of approving policy two, 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 one for a first reading? That is unanimous. It will come back to the policy committee. Emily and I will keep you all posted. There's a couple of other policies that we made mention of that will be coming for onboard governance soon, so be on the lookout for those. And then lastly, we have agenda item eleven point five, a resolution to approve expenditures for board members to attend the virtual or digital experience of the NISBA annual conference. And we'll entertain motions and then we'll engage in dialogue.
Motion to approve expenditures for board members, Dr. Jill Tripp and Dr. Sean Eversley Bradwell to attend the twenty twenty four NISBA annual convention digital experience. October twenty first through twenty second, twenty twenty four. And I'll note that, uh, Dr. Tripp and Dr. Brad will be sharing a room to save expenses.
Very well played, Dr. Tripp. That was great. Moved by Jill, second by Adam. Was that correct? Discussion, debate? I will note to folks noticed that Dr. Brown was featured in the onboard magazine. Asking what they are looking forward to about the NISBA conference. And so if you haven't seen your recent edition, you will see it. He is one of the superintendents that's quoted. I would presume, are you presenting this year, Dr. Brown? I was gonna say, there has not been one in the past twelve years that Dr. Brown has not presented a session at the NISBA conference, so. And normally actually, board members from ICSD have presented as well. So this may be the first time in a long time we ever presented, but that's beside this. That's not what we're voting on. So if there are any other conversation or discussion? All in favor? Fantastic, fantastic. Thank you all very much. Other business, our community should know that we have two advisory councils at our next board meeting. The second board meeting of every month will have committee updates. Our communication team does a phenomenal job of giving committee summaries, so please take a look at those. However, we will work on what that means for the advisory councils. Earlier today, Dr. Brown, myself, Catherine Snera and Aaron Croyle met briefly to begin thinking about the Legislative Advocacy Committee. Additional emails will be going out as we reach out to folks and have a conversation about what are the shared pieces of legislation that we can all support? To make sure that we are pushing at the state level and at the local level, so more information will be happening there. On Thursday, Dr. Tripp will be helping to organize a small group of folks as well. To begin talking about the Revenue Exploration Committee. More information will be coming out as well. Though these are precursors to the larger groups that are taking place, just trying to get some infrastructure around. Membership who will be invited, but we want the community to know that both advisory councils are beginning the work this week with additional invitations going out. Should folks have an interest, please reach out to us and to my board colleagues. Just know, I know a message went out. Please do let the people who are organizing know. If we have more than five board members present, it becomes an official board meeting, which means it needs to be announced at least twenty four hours in advance. And so we need to keep an idea of who will be present or who will be present for any one of those advisory councils. Yes, Karen?
Just want to let my colleagues know that you have a copy of a draft board member handbook. We thank Emily Tracy Arm for providing a draft from other school districts. We've never had one here before. So we want to make sure we get one in place soon. And Sean, Erin and I were involved in this, so your feedback is definitely welcome, especially for our new board members. What, what would you want to see in there to make sure going forward, we capture as much as possible?
Thank you for that, Karen. And the audience for the handbook is board members. There, we will be able to make it available. It's, anything is foilable, so that's not the question. But the audience for this handbook is to onboard board members. So please take a look and if, hopefully it provides some additional information. If you have suggestions, by all means. And again, thank you to our, to Emily for the great work that was done there. Any additional items, good folks?
Very quick one. There's been some interest in whether we're going to continue the board liaison positions to the schools. And we are still discussing that and hope to have an answer within the next couple of weeks as to whether that is the kind of mode of communication we want to continue or move to something different. So be a little, be patient a little bit longer.
Thank you for that, Jill, as well. If that is it's. Oh, yes. Hello? Please do.
Hi guys, my name is Jingyin and I'm a rising sophomore here at IHS. So I'm sorry about the late arrival, but I was at a tennis match. And I'm hoping to raise the points that I was planning to raise today at the next board meeting. But regardless, it's nice to meet all you guys and I hope to work with you guys pretty soon.
Great to meet you. Thank you for joining us.
Welcome and did you win? All right.
Congratulations, crush thing. We will end on a victory. The meeting is brought to a close, good folks. Thank you very much.